Okay, we'll call the meeting to an end. We'll have a prayer and pledge led by Councilman Keaton Fish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight thankful for Goddard, Kansas. We thank you for this incredible city and the community that lives here, Lord. I just pray that you would allow us to make intentional decisions that will better our community as we continue forward tonight, Lord, and that we would feel your presence. It's in your gracious name. Amen.
Okay, item C, approval of the agenda. We need to add an agenda item. Agenda item number eight, six, Dog Day. We're gonna do that dog cleaning day. We're gonna wash all the dogs off on the pool, right? So, do I have a motion to add?
Make a motion.
That agenda item?
Second.
Motion by Keaton, second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Dog wash day. Alright. Citizen comments, item D. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to come up and speak for three minutes?
Good evening. My name is John Turnus. I live here in Goddard. I came to visit back in September about the community of Goddard. And in that conversation, I was given that we would... The building wasn't gonna build right away, and so I was given a growing season. So, here it is, the middle of the harvest season, and I've got six days to be out of the garden. That's not the growing season, this is the harvest. So, and I understand the progress, I understand what's going on around me. I just wanted to come and express my dismay and discouragement at all the work, all the effort that's gone into producing out there. Try and make it a nice place. And by the twenty-eighth, it'll be just a piece of dirt, just under development. So, just to give you an idea, what's growing back there now, and what I'm harvesting now, is green beans. Got okra, we've got tomatoes, we've got beets, I've got collard greens, kale, and carrots. So, like I said, all that's just gonna be uprooted right in the middle of the season. And I felt the need to come and express my disappointment. So, that's basically all that I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, John.
Anybody else? Go on once, go on twice. Sold, okay. Moving on to item E, appointments, proclamations.
This is the plant commissioner first. Oh, oh, and then what I need to give. So, this will be item E one, this is to reappoint the plant commissioner. So, we have plant commissioners operate on a three-year term basis, with one-third of the plant commissioners being reappointed each year. The mayor wants officials to office, and they are confirmed by the governing body. Daniel Hayden was appointed on August first, 2022, to replace Commissioner Denneron. That term expires this year, and he's seeking reappointment for another three-year term. Jamie Coyne has served on the plant commissioner now for seven years, and has had significant contributions to the building environment and general growth of the city. Mayor Lock has reviewed both requests by the plant commissioners and submits the recommendation before the city council can reappoint him for another three years. Jamie Coyne, Daniel Hayden. This is the bylaws, and the honorable for officers. And so, officials out organizing on the first regular meeting after annual appointment of new members, which is over the first city council in December. Commissioners are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council for a term of three countable years. On a staggered basis, approximately one-third of the commissioners reappoint each year. So, basically, if he was reappointed, they likely were reappointed in 2023. They'd go from January twenty twenty-five to December twenty twenty-four, January twenty twenty-five to December of twenty twenty-five, January twenty twenty-six, then at some point, they'd have to be renewed before the end of December of twenty twenty-six for another three-year term. Financially none, legally approved as a form. It is recommended the city council approve the mayor's decision to renew the three-year terms of Commissioner Coyne and Commissioner Hayden.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Commissioner Coyne, Commissioner Hayden.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Okay. Honorable counsel, city staff, and members of the community today, I was given a recommendation for a nomination of the Mayor's Award by the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce would like to nominate Ron Fear for the Mayor's Award for the month of July. Ron Fear and his wife Bonnie own Postnet at One Thirty-Fifth and Maple. Ron gives a lot of time volunteering for Goddard community events, mainly Fall Fest. Ron has ended up, headed up logistics for Fall Festival for many years, and has even spent the night in the park making sure that the equipment's safe. The sponsor, they sponsor several events as the promotional sponsor, and they provide signage, printing, and promo items at a great price for many Goddard businesses. Ron is a huge supporter of the local businesses, and has served on the Chamber of Commerce board in various positions since 2013. Ron, I just wanna say thank you for everything that you've done for Goddard. I appreciate this. Come on up here. Ron, you wanna come up here too? I apologize.
Alright. Oh, you gotta do this.
Yeah, you gotta smile at it. Good? Thank you.
Alright, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Alright. Thank you, guys. Okay. Moving on to the next item, consent agenda. Do we have any problems with the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Keaton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item H one, annexation.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is item H one, House of Blues, annexation request. So, a block company has submitted a petition for annexation on behalf of Leland and Thomas Barney for attractive land located on the county, which could be generally located around Hundred Eighty-Third Street South of US 54 and north of the trail. The land is proposed to be developed into a commercial development for Casey's General Store. This land is abiding the corporate city limits of Goddard, which allows the city annex it through the petition process per KSA 12520A. City council will now consider it ordinance for annexation, which will become finalized after it's published in the city newspaper. Per KSA 12520A, there's several options here for annexation. We are looking at number seven. The land joins the city, and a writ petition for or consent to annexation is filed with the city by the property owner. This is the property in question. Walmart's down in this general area over here, you have Murphy's across here, then you have Dairy Queen, Grau's, et cetera. This is the out west development over here. The residential property will be underway through the annexation reselling process. There will be a small fee for publication, legal considerations, it is approved as a form. It is recommended the city council both one way through the ordinance, and then approve the annexation ordinance.
Do I have a motion to waive the reading?
Make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance?
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor say aye.
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 Make a motion to approve the annexation ordinance?
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Keaton. Roll call.
That's member Fish?
Yes.
That's member Leland?
Yes.
That's member Trailer?
Yes.
That's member Collins?
Yes.
Maybe ordinance nine three zero.
Do you need my vote?
Mayor Lock?
Yeah.
May be the Honorable Mayor and Councilor. Item H two is for the purchase of a mosquito fogger. During the summer months, public works of our sprays reduce the mosquito population of the city. The spray is dispensed using a ULV fogger, sprayer commonly referred to as a fogger. It's generally done weekly shortly after sunset. The city's fogger is currently inoperable due to one out of home spraying mechanism. It's about twenty years old. As I said, the fogger is worn out, it's inoperable. To continue, mosquito fogging would require the purchase of a new sprayer. We're proposing the purchase of a new Grizzly, Clark Grizzly ULV sprayer. The Grizzly is a modern fogger that includes an expanded spray radius and GPS flow control. It will allow the resumption of mosquito foggy program. There's a call day from Councilmember Fish, or text, I mean, regarding fogging. I guess the question was what we put on, and the impact it has on the environment and everything around it. Well, we use it in malothion, and it's a relatively benign chemical that, if you spray it after dark when the honeybees and the butterflies are in, it pretty much focuses on those night bugs like mosquitoes. Once it lands on the surface or on the ground, it becomes inert. However, it does stay on package, you know, if you have outside pet water and stuff, you should change it. I don't know of any, it's commonly used everywhere. I don't know of any major issues with using it. I know we've got citizens plus and, you know, for spraying and for not spraying. We have not been spraying this year, one because the fogger was broken and the drought that we had prior to the recent rains. We weren't having mosquito issues. Now that we are starting to see some mosquitoes pop up a little bit, we decided to bring this to council, and if you choose, purchase it and resume the spraying program. The cost of the sprayer is nineteen thousand two hundred fifty dollars. If approved, it will be allocated to equip reserve other equipment. Questions?
I know one of the concerns is people see the fogger at night and they go, what's the government spraying on us, right? They don't know what it is. But it's nothing to be afraid, you know, of. I notice the difference, it works, so.
In the past, we've timed spraying with social media posts explaining what they're seeing.
Yeah, yeah.
That may not help.
We used to follow that thing around when I was a kid on bicycle.
Is that, is that what happened to you, Alfreds?
My grandma said it'd make your hair fall out, but I don't know where.
So, I guess it's up to council if you would like to approve the purchase of a Clark Grizzly mosquito fogger at the cost of nineteen thousand two hundred fifty dollars.
So, before, before we vote, I did wanna say, after we talked today, I did a little bit of research. And what I found is, like you were saying, it's usually not all that harmful. However, it can affect individuals living with asthma, and it can affect people with different types of cancers, especially like lung cancer. If, if you happen to breathe it in, and I understand that that's not likely, but as somebody with severe asthma, it does kinda stand out to me. And I personally don't love, I get, we hate mosquitoes, but this stuff is, it does sometimes kill bees, it kills butterflies, it kills other things that, as somebody who has a garden, you know, I need those. So, for me personally, I am against fogging in the future. I just wanted to put out my reasoning before we vote.
To, to address the killing of other insects, we try to minimize that by spraying thirty minutes after sundown. And generally, the honeybees are back in their highs, and your other good insects have already nested up, so to speak. And that's what the mosquitoes are about. So, that is something that we do take into consideration.
Any other commentary? Do I have a motion to approve, not approve? What do we do? Okay, I'll motion to approve the mosquito bug killer machine for nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second.
Motion by myself, second by Aubrey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all against?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item H three is a repair for the poor in place surface at Linear Park. In twenty nineteen, the playground Linear Park was expanded. When we did that, we included the installation of a poor in place surface. It is a custom rubber coating that provides an awesome impact rated round barrier for that protects children from injury while enjoying the playground. For the past forty years, the surface being rubber, the sun beats on with the water, it's said it does degrade somewhat. It has developed a hole approximately one foot diameter, and actually, there's two holes near each other down by the merry-go-round. And that creates a trip hazard lots of water penetrated the remaining surface, reducing its lifespan. When we repair the existing hole, we have to have a crew come on site to do it. At that time, that's a great time to have the rubber treated with a rejuvenator that will soften it, clean it up, and keep it nice and expand its life. We are requesting to hire Taylor Made Company to repair the poor in place surface at Linear. The repair will also include, as I said, a service rejuvenator. The cost of the repair is eight thousand eighty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. Would be allocated a hundred percent capital out.
Is Taylor Made the original company that poured?
Yes.
And there's no type of warranty or?
The warranty was two years, it's four years, you know, four years. So, it's one of those things where, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's in the sun, and it's forever, so it's something we need to probably think about every fourth or fifth year putting rejuvenator on those surfaces.
How long after we do that is it, do we have to keep it shut down?
It shouldn't have to be shut down too long, maybe a day.
Okay.
You know, it's not a long process. The holes are small repair. It's interesting, they mix it up by concrete and trowel, and it's rough.
Really?
And then, once it's all down, they'll clean it, and then they'll spray it with rejuvenator and just smooth it out.
We were ironically, we were at the park yesterday, and my daughter fell into one of those holes. And then my wife, yeah, my wife was like, you need to call Brett. Yeah. No, I don't, it's there.
And it's kinda funny, there was a miscommunication between Oliver and John Engel, our parks attendant and myself. He mentioned doing something with the surface, but he didn't tell me there was a hole. So, so it kinda went a little longer than I would like to because of that miscommunication. We're on it now, we'll get it very quick.
Do we have this in the budget every four years?
This, so this repair will be capitalized out of Parks and Rec Fund. We have an annual appropriation for maintenance in the budget that would, I mean, we're gonna be looking at what it would cost to get like on a maintenance schedule for rejuvenating? Because I'm thinking that that could at least mitigate some of the damage caused, that's been caused by these two holes.
If we can, and as Matt said, when they, when we talk to them more about this, we've been talking about doing a maintenance point, it may be less expensive, you know, over time. I know there are some plans to possibly expand poor in place surfaces to other parks in town, and that deals in economy scales well, so.
My short answer for budgeting purposes, I don't think it's an annual thing. I think it's gonna be like an every other year thing. And because of that, it's just easier to budget it to kind of the general capital type expenses we have in the Parks and Rec Fund, which is a special revenue fund, so.
Okay, but we'll, we'll make sure that we just keep this in mind.
We budget a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars a year in that fund, and we don't always spend all of that.
Okay.
And this was something new, this surface, of course, is new to the city, and we're learning as we go. I was not aware that we'd rejuvenated back here now, so.
What causes of damage are first?
Well, it would be some kids playing on it. Yeah, we've, we, I've seen everything. I have driven by there and had to stop kids with cinder blocks on top of that net tower. I drove there, it was Christmas time, and kids had pulled them off a senior tree, or hang a Christmas tree there. I have been over where they were throwing everything off of them, like I was gonna do that. And then they stopped me for us, but kids are kids, and it's rough. You know how it goes, so.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the hiring Taylor Made Company to repair the poor in place surface for the cost of eight thousand eighty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents.
Motion by Keaton.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Honorable Mayor and City Councilors, item H four, Big Arm Water Sewer Low Bid Award.
Thank you, Ron.
So, quick background, the Big Arm Development was approved for the final plan August first, 2022. And after planning developers submit petitions for improvements through the special assessments process, these petitions for improvements were approved by resolutions adopted on January third, 2023. The improvements for water sewer were bid on July twenty-sixth at ten AM, and the low bidder was no lock construction. The cost of the walk will be paid through the temporary notes of 2023 dash two. The engineer's estimate for the water sewer improvement was two hundred ninety-one thousand seventy-five dollars. No lock bid, two hundred thirty thousand six hundred sixteen. It was noted that the water bid came in over the engineer's estimate, but the sewer bid came in under, and collectively, the total bid came in under the engineer's estimate, allowing the project to move forth without re-bidding. City council not considering improving the low bid no construction for the installation of water and sanitary sewer for the Big Arm Development. Mid-breakdown for total construction cost is as follows, with the engineer's estimate being at the top, no lock in yellow, and then the following on here, the color and these. This is the Big Arm Development, this is Darrell Street Castle. This is off South Goddard Road, plus Twenty Third Street. Financial considerations are not legally approved as a form. It is recommended the council award low bid sanitary sewer and water improvements for the Big Arm Development for no lock construction.
Got any questions? None? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to award the low bid for the sanitary sewer and water improvements for the Big Arm Development to no lock construction.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Honorable Mayor and Councilor, item H five is for crosswalk painting. Every August, Public Works paints the city's crosswalks. They are painted for the safe crossing for the students returning to school. When we paint the crosswalks, it requires approximately hundred sixty man-hours and seven thousand dollars in paint, with a total cost of over nine thousand dollars annually. Twenty twenty-three, we are proposing hiring of a contractor to paint these. Several vendors were contacted, and best bid was submitted by NLC Construction for eighty-four hundred dollars. Because they buy their paint at bulk, they can do it cheaper. I dare to say it will probably be better striking because well, they have professional equipment. And probably better striking than we can do. Say that, it's true, it's true. So, we're proposing to contract citywide crosswalk painting for twenty-three. If this is approved, the contract will be notified tomorrow, and they are ready to pull the trigger and start painting tomorrow. So, we can have everything done by school starts, I think, on seventeen. So, this won't have, won't have minimal impact on costs, free up our employees for other tasks, which we've done a lot of those. So, as I said, we're requesting approval to hire a contractor for crosswalk painting at a cost of eighty-four hundred dollars. The cost will be allocated one hundred percent to capital improvement. Any questions?
How long does this take?
How long does it take to paint?
Yeah.
It takes, takes about four employees a week.
Okay.
And it's a big hit on our revenue.
For sure. You, you just said potentially starting tomorrow. Could we wait and not have fresh paint at the Main Street Market on Sunday?
I can have them do it where it's set Main Street.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we can, we can definitely work with them. NLC is a local contractor, it is Chris Alexander. So, he is a Goddard guy, he's excited to do this. And he's, he's great to work with.
Yeah, either first or last.
So, he's great to work with.
Perfect.
Yeah, either first or last, he would work, now remember, first or last. In the next, I don't have the exact date yet, but in the next month, we're gonna be milling two inches of asphalt off of Main Street from Santa Fe to Third Street. We're replacing a brand of asphalt, we'll be new spraying there.
Yep.
So, and that's the same company won the contract that bid for that striking as well.
Perfect. So, are you even gonna do the crosswalk down here?
We will do them now because we should have them done because of first aid. But I'll have to reinforce them, we'll be.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve hiring NLC Construction to paint the city's crosswalks for the cost of eight thousand four hundred dollars.
Motion by Keaton.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Council. We have the H five volume, Taryn and I are gonna have a team up. Actually, we both, because we're both involved in the pool.
Basically, we're just looking for direction on whether or not you wanna have the dog day to coincide with the Sunday Main Street Market. I've got three guards left over, no supervisors, they're high school kids. We can probably make it work. The chlorine level will be low, so they're gonna probably drop the level of the pool so that the kids, or the people do get in, it won't be over their knees because of the low chlorine level.
We will, we will, we will change this. We will have to increase this chlorine level between now and then, as the pool will turn green. So, we have to use all of our chemicals this year, we timed it perfectly. And right now, knowing we'll be training the pools, that training, we will lower the, we will lower some to give, so people who walk with their dogs get a little bit of a zero entry type, type situation. But we will have to purchase a quantity to double the work of chemicals tomorrow to keep that pool nice and healthy. The heat, and just, everything just eats chemicals out of pools. So, it's just, it's an unfortunate need to be decided like this. And I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm just saying that we need to get back to some ice cream first, chemicals and crap.
So, I'm gonna switch sides against myself. This sounds like a lot more work than it needs to be to just have some dogs swim in a pool. I didn't know it was gonna take all that.
The biggest issue for me is lack of supervision over there.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have supervision, which we've got to have. Taryn and I have talked about that, and the first and worst idea is to not supervise.
Ah, don't worry.
I don't know that our liability extends to that.
Maybe in our island, outside of my island.
Yeah. Angie and her making eye contact. Let's not even worry about it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't care to take them, not by a minute.
Okay, no dog.
It was a really good idea at the time.
It's a great idea, and I think it would be a fun idea.
If you wanna bring your dogs by my driveway, I'll spray them with those.
Pressing my blow bubbles, I'm like, I need.
Kiss them to death. Well, yeah, so, when I was in high school, I was a lifeguard, and we always did a dog day at the end at our pool. And I thought it was the greatest, like, so that's the only reason, I was like, ah, it's so much fun. But I didn't have to clean pool after all, so I just showed up.
Keaton, maybe if we, you know, we kinda had a strange situation this year with managing the pool and everything going on, our pool manager did not do a great job. She was out there. Maybe next year, we can plan it again, have staff still around, and we can talk about that.
Yep.
Okay, no dogs. We're gonna move on to governing body comments. Keaton?
First thing, Brooke, I'm assuming this would be something I need to talk to you about. Main, or Second Street, right at Second and Main.
Okay.
You know the sidewalk on the south side? Who's, who's in charge of all those trees? Cause you can't walk down those sidewalks.
What's going on? We, we replaced some squares on it recently, is it starting, is a tree poking them up some way?
I have a picture for you.
We replaced some last spring, is it?
It's bad, dude.
We replaced them last spring, and generally, they're pretty fast. Generally, it's a city responsibility, it's on private property, it's generally theirs.
Okay, thank you so much. I just want people to be able to use the sidewalks. Okay, other than that, we got Main Street Market this weekend, sorry, I'm pulling up numbers real quick. Main Street Market, Sunday, two to five, right on Main Street, third one of the summer. And sixty-eight vendors as of right now, always accepting more vendors. So, super excited to be out there. You know, I hear a lot, as we talk about Goddard growing, people say, well, we wanna be a small town. And I agree one hundred percent, but we do have to grow in some ways. But one way that we can maintain that small town feel is showing up to things like our Main Street Market, and also, National Night Out is Friday night, so. So get out. I would urge anybody listening at home, there's not a lot of people in here that probably won't be there, but anybody who's seeing this, I would urge you to get out to National Night Out Friday night. Get out to Main Street Market and come be a part of the community that we have.
Thank you, Keaton. Sarah?
I should know this. What time is National Night Out?
Six to nine.
Yeah, that's all I got.
Aubrey?
Yeah, we got a productive couple of days ahead of us.
Yeah.
I'm excited for that, you know, so. Everybody knows what's going on, right?
Yeah.
But we have, we're holding some interviews for our, for a position we have. And I'm really thrilled to see the candidates that came forward, and looking forward to going through that process tomorrow and Wednesday. So we're doing good things for Goddard. Make sure we're gonna get a very, very strong candidate in there. And we'll be a little bit of pressure on you guys, right? That's all I got.
Beren?
Did you ever get a, the ceiling figured out next door?
Which item?
We talked about the ceiling?
The ceiling, yes. They came in, and they're redoing their, their quote. It shouldn't really change the cost much. The ducting may change. But everybody likes the idea. I think that's the direction we wanna go. It's gonna open it up. It'll modernize it. The, the, the contractor was excited that, that we wanted to do that. He thought it would look great, too.
Okay, good.
So that's the direction we're headed right now. I think it's gonna be nice.
Awesome. And then the, the kitchen pass-through, that needs to be lowered to eighty-eight height.
No, I wasn't aware of that, so we'll talk about that after this.
So it's too tall? It's too tall? Technically, it's too tall.
Which item is?
The pass-through.
Okay.
That pass-through that has the shut windows, that should be eighty-eight height.
Is there a lip there?
It's thirty-four inches to the top, the countertop.
Oh, I see. The countertop's too high. I see what you're saying. Okay.
So it needs to be eighty-eight height. So we need to change that.
Okay, we'll change that as well, Ben. Thank you.
Okay.
That's it.
So Aubrey mentioned some of it. So we're starting the city administrator candidates. We've got fifteen candidates total, and we've narrowed it down to five. I've seen a post asking what the special meeting was with the council, and we had a special meeting to discuss the candidates like we, we talked about. So we're going through those candidates. We've got very qualified, good people, so hopefully, hopefully, everything works out with that. In the next two days, we're going to be spending all day interviewing them with the council and the city staff. So I'm looking forward to that, and hopefully, we make some progress on that front. The bank transfer, Matt, where are we at on that?
We're planning to do the transfers of most of the cash at the end of this month, and with hopefully, you know, fully, at least ninety-nine percent use of the new account starting September first.
September first? Are we, have we worked with First National? Are they on the same page with everything? They're ready? Okay. Okay. Road bond improvements? How are we on North Fronted Road and everything there?
We, we had the survey. They're, they're scheduled to come out and I think do Second Street first and then Gutter Road to develop plans so that we can bid that project out. Select a contractor. So, I mean, we gotta do a little bit of engineering, planning, and survey.
Okay.
To make sure we get the drainage right and, and figure quantities.
Okay, so we're still waiting on the engineering for North Fronted Road?
Yes.
Okay. When do we plan on getting that, I guess, that finished and bid out? Do you know?
Well, that's a little tough, a little tough to say. Let me, let me, can I see when the survey, let me find out when the survey's supposed to be completed? So then I, then that gets it in my shop, and then I can get the plan developed.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess to piggyback off of that, Micah, have we heard from the neighbors from Hawkins Lane?
Yeah, I spoke with the Barneses today, so Ryan and Bill Barnes, and so they have some questions about the agreement, and that we need to kinda review with Ryan. Whether or not it's acceptable language to refine it. But they had some questions about the mill levy and applying it to them, and for the contract, in perpetuity, et cetera. And I don't know how much of that language can actually be added to the contract or not. They wanted it to be really refined in a, in specific ways, and I have to run that by Ryan, so see what we can actually do.
Okay.
We have one of its side. We had Jim Fouts sign his portion of it. So Barnes, I was talking with them today. I haven't heard from the Welch's yet. They have the contracts in their hands. It's just a matter of.
You delivered it, Bill.
I did, hand over to the plan, yeah. One of the neighbors, Caitlin Warchester, I guess, is biking across the country. So, so I emailed her, but I don't know if I'll be hearing back from her anytime soon, so.
Okay. Okay, and community center stuff, the stuff hanging in the community center, the stuff in the storage rooms. It was brought up to me that one thing with the bingo and, and some of the other things. I understand that there are a few items that we're gonna have to keep in storage. One, the bingo stuff. Two, the fitness equipment, and then the, the third one, what's the third one, I guess? The third one would be the sign for the bingo, right? Because the, it was bingo, the, oh, tables and chairs, right? Tables and chairs, bingo, and fitness equipment, we need to keep. And so I don't know if we can consolidate that into one room. I know Ryan's club brought up that they would, they were concerned about if the bingo sign and the bingo stuff was in the same room as the fitness equipment and the tables and chairs, that it would get bumped or hit. I don't know the logistics on that, how we can figure out something. It's been brought up that we might wanna take out one of those storage rooms, so it has more space. I don't know if that's possible. But all of the other stuff, the cabinet with all the trophies and everything, that's gone, right? It's all that, and it's not coming back. Okay. And we will change the locks.
It's changed already.
Okay, the, the locks are already changed just for construction, so.
They were changed. Actually, we had planned to change them, and the front lock malfunctioned, so we were a couple days early, but they've been changed.
Okay, just to get that clear with everybody, the locks are changed. Everybody needs to know that, and that's the plan with all of the goodies in the community center, okay? All right, we have an executive session. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion. To recess an executive session under KSA seventy-five for forty-three nineteen for a consultation with attorney on matters related to real estate, including city attorney, community development director, city clerk. We're reconvene, open meeting council at approximately ten to eight.
No, eight.
Eight o'clock.
Motion by Aubrey.
Second.
Second by Keaton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
We love the way for show that there is no blocking action taken during executive session. Your motion, your...
Motion.
Motion by Keith second. Motion by Sarah. All in papers, aye?
Aye.
Aye.